Lee's not here?
Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, stand for the pledge, please your men stand in honor of the silence in honor of our servicemen and women and honor the tragedies that have occurred in the last couple of weeks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mr. Clark, the case called.
Mr. Amoranto.
Present.
Mr. Ferrioli.
Here.
Mrs. Ogles.
Present.
Mr. Graeble.
Here.
Mrs. Kennedy.
That's him.
Dr. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Nuchie.
Present.
Mrs. Longley.
Present.
Mrs. Nancy.
Present.
Mr. Mittelman.
Present.
Mrs. Hutchinson.
Present.
Thank you.
Do I need a motion and second to approve the minutes of August 22nd, 2017 business meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can open right up a public comment. It's thirty minutes in length. This section of the agenda gives the Board of Education an opportunity to recognize persons who wish to raise a question or to make a brief statement on items related to agenda items only. Other statements regarding school matters will be recognized if time allows. The time available will be limited to three minutes for one or more topics. Persons wishing to speak are asked to adhere to the following guidelines. Step to the podium, address the Board President only. You may address one or more topics in the time allotted. Individual employees, parents, or children should not be identified by name, title, position, grade, or building. The Board has the final decision determining the length of time, the appropriateness of the subject being presented, and the suitability of the time for such a presentation. Do we have any speakers tonight?
I want to consider the microphone.
The song "The Lotto" is now ten million.
Taryn, this is just for you. Last year around this time, we had finalized about fifteen million dollars. It was twenty-one million in the last appropriations, and then you knocked it down to fifteen million. And then we took some of that money and we appropriated it to pay down debt. There was still like six million dollars left, so my question is, what happened to that? And then this year, there's eight million dollars left as of June 30th, and eight and a half million. And I wanted to know if you had finalized those numbers yet?
We're not finally yet. We have Joe Sanders coming in his board meeting.
Okay.
And she'll present that.
With a microphone, it's all the way up there, so that's awesome. What about the, for the last year, we have fifteen million that we appropriated, about nine and a half million, a little bit more than nine and a half million?
You know what, none of those, that's not exactly the billions we are, you must be telling me about appropriate.
Remember, we had fifteen million dollars, and then you took it to pay down debt. We had the Board approved like nine point six million, something like that.
That's coming out of this year. You're talking about the nine million last year.
Right.
That went to a capital reserve.
Right, capital reserve.
You're confusing it with the.
No.
That payment that was planned to happen and did happen August 30th, late this year.
Oh, right.
From sixteen seventeen.
But that was out of that, from sixteen seventeen, right. Out of that, because remember, it was twenty-one million, then you had tidied it up, because bills had come in over the summer, and the bottom line was fifteen million. So then.
We're not, you know, I'm not ready to talk about the bottom line yet, we're not.
No, this is from last year.
Okay.
Yeah, this is from last year. So there was still money left over from that last year money after we did the reserve.
It stays in fund balance then.
Right, unapplied fund balance, right?
Unappropriate funding.
So that's where it still is right now?
That's where it stays.
Okay, do we know how, how much money is in the unapplied fund balance right now?
I don't have that one.
All right, will you be able to email me?
There'll be a, there'll be a whole presentation next time.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
And be updated to include sixteen seventeen.
Okay.
Results of operations and the balance of that.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
We're almost there.
All right. I kind of figured, it was about this time last.
You're right, it's about this time. We're a little early, actually.
Yeah.
We'll see, whoever else has time. Anyone else? All right.
Oh, wait, can I ask one more question? Oh, answer.
The board meeting is wondering about extra help. And what was, what's the miracle that was supposed to be, I think, Mr. Hope, but then the last meeting, there was an atomic bomb, it was long, 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 so I didn't really, I don't know if we could still, still live here now.
We didn't.
Don't.
I know, we yell at them.
Okay, so.
I had it for last meeting, I don't have it right now, but.
I'm sticking with that.
What I, what I'll do is I'll give you a phone call.
Okay. My other then was, this is, my other, my other thing.
What?
Gym, sports and gym. And my, my, I guess my question, I had this question last year, probably before me before, regarding gym. I don't understand, like, we come in and the teachers and the classrooms, they're ready to go. The music, they're ready to go, they're doing music before school begins. We come to gym, and there's no activities until September 20th. Now, I know that there's assemblies, that's probably the day or two. I know that there's pictures, it's like yesterday at high school, always, always.
Are you saying that there's no gym until September 20th?
No, they sit on the bleachers.
No physical education activities?
Nothing. Sit on the bleachers, and, you know, I understand, come in the first day, you know, you have the pool, the fair, whatever you have to tell them, bring your sneakers, here's a list of lockers. Sign, sign your name. You like a machine? Sign your name.
See if you can hide this, or it just pushes away from you a little bit, so it's not so close for you yet.
Is that better?
Yeah.
So, you know, here's a list of lockers, sign your name, have your lock by tomorrow, we're playing gym. No, this goes, it's a day for the rules, it's a day for the locker assignment, then it's another day, bring the locks in, and then they were announced on yesterday gym, on each other day, yesterday, there'll be no activities until the 20th because of assemblies and pictures. And I get the assemblies and pictures, but if you look at the calendar, there's ten school days between the seventh and the 20th, you know, excluding the days where often weekends and all that. I just don't understand it, year after year. So that's why I think we're done. My other angst this week was, was the girls volleyball, soccer game, varsity soccer game that was canceled on Friday night. It, you know, the preparation that goes on, this was Northport, it would be Northport eight years, whatever. The post of varsity. Oh, J B did, right? The post of law, they had to place all the girls, and they're excited, I mean, they're into this. And then the discussion breaks out back, but I can't believe we have to play in that dirt field up there, someone's going to get hurt, blah, 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 it's not right, football starts at seven, they need the field for six. Why is it that we couldn't use the field for four sets? Why, why do we, so, so, to back up, then, then Northport comes. Now, I don't have to tell you what it means to get the parents, the grandparents, quarter mile back to the field. This is beyond the upper turf.
Turf field is, is, yeah, that's all the way up there.
That's the field topic that day.
Yeah.
This, we were playing beyond that. So now, everybody gets up there, the referee comes, and he says, you've got to be kidding me. I'm not going to break these kids' legs on that. You know, the girls know it from the day before, but our athletic department doesn't. Everybody gets sent home, grandparents, my husband cutting out a jury duty early to get to the game, you know. People go crazy to get there, and then you get sent home for something, do we not know how many playable fields we have?
So the game was canceled for field conditions?
Yeah. Yeah. And then, you know, Mr. Delacave came back and very smug, with no epipies, as he said, the parents were like, you know what, if this was football, or this was something else, it wouldn't be smug like that. You should know which fields you have that are playable. If this night wasn't the night to have that game, that they're scheduling another night, you know, we're playing tomorrow night at seven o'clock, we have a field with lanes, why, why not? Why do we all have to go through what we went through to get there, to try to get there on time? This, not stupid, we loved it, but the post of, and I, for what? Just that, that kind of sense.
Should I, the coach agree with you?
Yeah, the coach, you know, I don't think it's in his hand, you know, I don't, I don't think it's in the coach's hands.
Well, he should be the first person to be complaining about this field.
Yes.
May, you know, maybe he did, I, I don't know, I, I have no idea about that.
As a freshman here, I'm definitely going to find out a lot of things.
I don't even know how often my field was used, I don't know.
Yeah, it shouldn't happen.
And if soccer would have been off the field by six, the, the stadium turf, what's the conflict with football? They started seven, they needed the field from six, they said. What soccer was, no overtime, it was not, it was a non-lead, but it was, it was a regular game.
It's a real concern, it's a real concern.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. This question is actually from Terry Mackman, who could, here, Terry. As for the final numbers for the portion of the budget on BOCs that is under one one oh, uh, one oh four oh, one oh six oh, can you send me? So she's looking, she gave me two things. So she wants to know the final numbers for the, for the BOCs, the portion of BOCs. She said something about it being zero. So if you could give back to Terry on that, I'll be patient.
All right, thank you.
Take care.
Okay, anyone else? All right. We're going to move on to G, recommended action, personnel matters. Number one, Schedule One, resignations, terminations, leave zone, absence.
Motion, can you get a motion?
Second. Good, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, nick second. Okay. Number two, Schedule Two, appointments, tenure, salary changes. I'm going to get a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have anything other than number three? No? Okay. Move on to H, recommended action, financial matters. Motion, second for items two through six.
Motion.
Are there any questions?
No.
Mr. Graeble?
No.
Mr. Ferrioli? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On the I, consent, consent agenda, the motion and second for items two through nine.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
No.
Concerns? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to K, reports. Miss, Dr. Adams.
Thank you. So I am extremely impressed with the smooth opening that we had. I actually had an opportunity to be in nearly every building, at least one of the first races of school. I have to tell you, I had kindergartners at the, with the last five minutes to go of the second day school, who were sitting on the carpet, who were learning their Five Frame, and talking about five little monkeys, and looking at five, which is basically how we look at that now in cubes. It was like the kids had been at that school for three months. It just was a beautiful sight to behold. I had a kindergartner on her first day, it's today, saying to, saying to me, can you please tell me exactly when the buses were coming? Because she wanted to make sure her friends knew that the buses were coming to drive her home. And it was just one of those days that it, it was just delightful to be superintendent of ConnectWhat schools, because we were doing what we do best, which is take care of our kids, make sure they're learning, make sure they're happy, make sure they're moving forward, and it was just really, really an exciting day. I did put out to the majority of fifth graders, and I haven't had an opportunity to talk to my class of fifth graders yet, or my, I'd allow fifth graders yet, but I did give superintendent challenge, I went in every single class, introduced myself, talked to them about how great ConnectWhat is, and what a great education they were going to get, and I actually challenged all my fifth graders. Fifth grade is on the precipice of being that middle school student, and I want them to feel part of ConnectWhat. I want them to be connected. So I said to all of them, one of the best things I get to do as superintendent of ConnectWhat schools is go to a lot of different events. So you'll see me at concerts, you'll see me at football games, you'll see me at gymnastics meets, and you'll see me at plays, and you'll see me at parades. When you see me as a fifth grader, come on over, give me a high five, and say, hey, Dr. Adams, I'm a fifth grader from whatever school, and name your school. At the end of the year, the school that has the most kids who've come over and said hello to me over the course of the year will get a special superintendent surprise at the end of the school year. So Friday night was our first Friday Night Lights home game, and I have to tell you, I'm not going to tell you which school won so far, but I have to tell you that I had quite a few kids come on over and say, hey, Dr. Adams, I'm a tough field fifth grader, I'm a Signamore fifth grader, I'm a, not boss, because I don't need to talk to them yet, so I can't start counting yet, but it was just so exciting, they're like, are you doctor something? Like, they couldn't remember my name even, it was only 24 hours beforehand, but they were so absolutely adorable about the idea of talking to me and, and being there, and it was a great night, because the CYO kids in both football and cheerleading ran out of the helmet to welcome on the field for the first time on the home field, our football game for the year, and it was just a great night. If, we have our new hashtag, hashtag My ConnectWhat, and anything that you post with the hashtag My ConnectWhat will be attached through the Facebook page to the hashtag My ConnectWhat. That was a My ConnectWhat night. My husband, who is the president of the largest teachers union in the state county, I won't say what district it is, was there with me, and he said, you know, ConnectWhat really knows how to do this right, they know how to bring families together, communities together, to just celebrate our kids, and it was just an amazing night. So if you're a fifth grader, or you know a fifth grader, doesn't, hasn't heard the challenge, or is nervous to come talk to me? I actually was talking to Russ Humans, who runs the CYO, and said, they wanted to come over. You could see them, like, itching to come over and talk to me after they ran out of football helmet, they took them back off the field. So let them come over, let them talk to me. That's, I want them to feel connected, because as they move to middle school and are able to do more, I want them to have senior, be there for their, their older friends. So let them come on over, let them tell me what school they're, they're at, let me have a few minutes to talk with them. I'm really excited about it, I can't wait to see them.
Thank you. Okay, administrators, your reports tonight.
Want to talk about superintendent conference day and the work that came out of that end of the team?
That'd be great, we share.
Turn your mic on now. Monica from Sheraton.
You can turn on at the same time. I'd like to give you instructions as well, but I don't have it. So we were very fortunate to be able to have a really powerful and moving superintendent conference day, which focused on something that we've been working on throughout this past year, which is mindfulness. The focus was on the adults in our district, to make sure that they are understanding what mindfulness is, something that they can focus on their own self-care, and it's our belief that, you know, our educators are, are in a good place, that the instruction can be much better than that. So that's our initial focus, was on the adults. We have been rolling it out in a variety of different areas throughout our district, many of our elementary schools, and some of our middle schools have been working on mindfulness. There's a large district committee run by Ms. Gail Santo, Abby, before I stop. Ms. Santo did a majority, if not all, of the planning of the superintendent conference day, all of our instructional staff, most of our operational staff was involved as well, and, you know, for all accounts, it was a really fabulous day.
Day two followed with some additional training. Day two followed with some. I'm getting really serious. Day two was followed with some additional training for teaching, teaching assistants, teacher aides on A D, as well as EpiPen training, which I think was in our September 30 era of community superintendent conference day, where we rolled that out for all teachers, teacher assistant, and aides, for all the different buildings, for all kinds of things that had our students.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Board of Education? We'll see a couple of things.
I'd, I'll go first. I just, I've had the opportunity to attend the, the summer, we started a sixth grade committee, just off looking at when sixth grade is kind of configured, and we could make some changes to help the students with the adjustments, and curriculum and things like that. Dr. Adams is leading a whole group of stakeholders, from teachers to parents, to administrators, who have come down graciously over the summer, but it's hard to get people out. We have a large group in this room, we've come up with a lot of good statements to start with as to where we can start to direct the, the direction of where it's going, and we have a new meeting tomorrow night, so if you know anybody that is, they don't have to be a sixth grade parent, they could have something coming up that's going to be in sixth grade soon, or has gone through, and feels like they have something to add to it, because they've had their kids in sixth grade, we welcome, you know, anybody to come down, and we appreciate everybody's input. It's been great, really awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrioli.
Where is that, and what time?
Here, seven, six.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Thank you.
I just want, I have, I have two comments, one about all our sports this fall season. The fall season is my favorite season, we have great coaches here, great athletes, all our teams are very competitive, so I, if you can get out and watch some of those sporting events, they are excellent. I did want to shout out for this Friday, it is another home football game on Varsity Field. It's a, it's a great event, last, last week, they came back in the fourth quarter into overtime, and they were able to defeat one of them, so it was a great first win of the season. We also, I'm involved in the youth football organization here at ConnectWhat, and we had our first pep rally last Saturday evening here at the ConnectWhat High School, and it was awesome, it was an awesome event, many parents were there, many children were there. Yes, I got a smile in my face. It was a great time, and that was the first pep rally. So again, like Dr. Adams said, it was just another great event to see the community getting together, getting behind these kids to show support, so it's something that we will continue every year. The cheerleaders were there, and most impressive was that the varsity football team players were also there to show their support for the younger kids. I thought that was awesome. Coach Hanson was there on a Saturday evening, so that was great, again, just another show of community coming together to, for these ConnectWhat children, so I thought that was awesome. I do have a question to the moms in the room, elementary moms in the room, any comments about fifty minute lunch recess?
I was thinking you bring that up, I don't know.
No, no questions, no comments?
We want it.
Nothing to change.
When is that happening?
All right, I just wanted to see if they, yes.
You started, all right.
Yeah, it's made out of itself, are we elementary?
I don't know, I'm like, my.
Yeah. We have ten minutes to lunch, ten minutes to recess.
I will say that Ellis finally finishes her food, which is so freaking nice to see. So that's sort of this year, because she wasn't getting her bath, but last year, so that's exciting, it's great for me. Because it's more than that, because it's the walk path too that I think, but she's still not satisfied with the recess. So.
To, to be continued.
All right, you want?
You liked it?
Yes.
All right.
All right, there's no further comments from the Board, we're going to move on to another public comment. It's everything that I said before, ditto.
Hey, Abby.
Let's, second.
Just going to start running off ditto's.
Let's begin.
Um, I forgot to ask, first of all, Craig, I happen to say, because I'm half blind, looking at the light on there, I thought somebody was targeting you with a sniper gun, that's scary. I stepped back a little percent, that's why, because I'm half blind.
I know.
VAC committee, are we doing that this year? Are we starting in, you know, when it's really late and everybody complains, or can we start earlier this year if we are doing one?
I sent out an email to Terry McNamee, since she's president of the PT Council, you know, asking to make sure that each individual PTA.
I can't hear you, your microphone is not beautiful.
I sent an email, you really could hear me?
I could, I kind of could, and I appreciate that.
So asking her she would remind the PTA, individual PTA presidents, to include the VAC on their committee signup sheets.
All right, and what about, could we send it out to like the civics and the senior groups and that kind of thing?
Not yet.
Not yet. Are we, are we going to start it early, or are we going to start it like in March, and then you have to be ready for April? So no, a lot of people complain about that.
The invitations went out in November.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Okay.
They did last year.
Yeah.
Pardon me? Okay, well, you guys think.
We'd like to meet earlier is the point.
Once, once you were, you were established as VAC, you can start to meet.
Oh, that's the question, so when will it be established for this year, for this coming year?
The invitation will go out in November.
Okay.
Do you recall, Andrea, when it was adopted to have a VAC last year? Was it January?
The first meeting in December?
Oh, December, okay.
And the last question is, what did we decide on the regions, and the scoring, and all that good stuff, because they're going on.
Committee's supposed to come back to us.
Okay, and is the transcript committee starting up again, or was that a one-time deal?
I think, I think we'll have a back committee, like, we can have a lot of suggestions.
Some of the transcript recommendations, we're going to move forward on.
Okay.
In regards to what it looks like on the transcript, the thing that was going back to committee was the, the waiting.
The waiting? Okay, not, right, so not twenty percent, just see if they can change that, okay?
Yeah, that was, no determination was made on that, but the other, other recommendations from the committee, we're going to move forward.
All right, and can other people still join in, how do you do that?
I'm assuming that should be going to the principal high school.
Contact Mr. House.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much. That's it, ma'am, I promise.
Anyone else? Motion in a second to move into, to, motion. All right. Motion, motion.
Gone, that's bad. Easy, brazen stuff. The club's in the high school, so they have like a teacher, like a faculty member who is in charge of the club, right? And then they meet, is there a certain amount of time that they have to meet? Anyone in charge? Okay. So as far as clubs in the elementary school, like, if there is any kind of like language, like Spanish, or sign language, or science, like, cool clubs like that, if they had any interest in taking their club, say, once every other week, or whatever the case may be, even as a community service thing to the elementary schools, so that would, so that the elementary schools could share in that kind of club without paying anybody else to lead the clubs, is that something that's possible? You want the kid from the club to calm down, or like the high schoolers to calm down? Yeah, because then they'd be getting like community service time, and it would kind of like bridge that community piece, and it'd be really cool for the elementary school kids to have more club opportunities, and. What specifically, like what? Let's say.
Turn your microphone on.
Let's say languages, like, or Spanish, or sign language. Honor society, so maybe you guys should reach out to the honor society. Okay. Own our society, and, is it Sosa or any else?
But I think it's, I think it's even more simple, that if you probably call the building principal, the principal, let your building principal, that, you know, most of the people in the club, the staff, they're looking for contact with the other building principal in the club, so that's probably going to be cheap.
Well, you're looking to do this after the school, right? Mm-hmm.
We do this every outside, and because the high school gets out early than the elementary school does, and it's very local, it's on one campus, and the kids can walk over there, but the parenting classes will go to the elementary school and teach some, some reading lessons to the kids, or the F B A, the W A kids will go there and do a lesson for the elementary school kids as well, but it's very convenient where, where I don't, there's three schools on one campus, it's easy to get to.
We do have clubs that come down to the elementary schools, not on a regular basis, but they're, are, national, our, our language honor society does teach languages to each one of our elementaries, I believe it's fourth, fifth grade that they go to, D.
Yes.
We also have athletes helping athletes that, that come down and work with some of our kids in the elementary levels, so it's a little more globalized, because our high school's kids still need to be supervised also. Yes. So you would still need some kind of a faculty sponsor to do something along those lines, but we can certainly talk about how we might be able to use community service hours from some of the different kids in the different clubs that need that, in order to remain active members of their clubs. So our national honor society definitely needs that, I believe our civic club needs that as well, whatever, you know, our A T O bullying club also, they need to do community service, so we can reach out to a couple of different advisors to see if that might be something that they can be interested in doing, the only thing is, the adult has to be there as well. So. So that club advisor, that's what I was trying to avoid, yeah, so that's why I was thinking, if it was a club, they had a club advisor that was already, you know, doing the work. Doing that type of thing with them, right.
Could you utilize the PTA?
Could you utilize the PTA with that?
You could, if the PTA wanted to organize something along those lines. I would just be cautious of having 15, 16, and 17-year-olds do something with elementary kids without adult supervision.
Right, now I'm saying a PTA parent?
If, if a PTA parent be willing to do something along those lines, I don't see that as a problem whatsoever.
It only, I know the teachers have their contracts, so the teacher, sorry to tread on you. I know the teachers have to be asked first because they're entitled to a stipend first. But if, if no one stepped up, that would be the only way, I would say, then, then go to the PTA.
Oh, you mean as a club advisor?
Right.
Yes.
Well, if the club is interested, they could make it, you know, sign that one of their monthly meetings at particular schools.
Oh, right, okay.
Or they even rotate it.
You know, and do something, but like I said, it's gotta, gotta go through, I guess, by some...
Yeah, the principals are the elementary ones too.
Contacting...
So that's probably my first contact, is our principal?
Yeah, definitely through your principal, deciding, you know, trying to get, because you have to remember that advisor was doing whatever club, like your school.
Who doesn't exist yet.
Oh, it doesn't exist, okay, so we're sure to create something.
She wants to build more clubs.
Okay, so that's...
I think you should be nice, if you go be nice on a more consistent basis. And then just going back to that connection piece, like when young kids have someone who is five or two and they see the high school kids and they fall around and just build a community.
Yeah, I like to give, I don't know.
So when you, when you new club would definitely have to do this with principal planning.
So that's the first door, not the end.
That's, that's, that's who you can speak to and tell her with the new club, these are some of the ideas I have and like to upgrade possibly, get any other clubs involved.
And she'll know where to reach out from there, she knows the best.
She'll pick up the phone and call Mr. Wong.
Right, so they, they, they will, they will go through, uh, and now he has a head start.
Get that answer ready.
It's the locals, he knows.
Does the calendar come for everybody?
It comes for households, so have you not received yours yet?
I have not received, my Bostie moms have not received, you saw it on Facebook, we don't want it.
Okay, so it's coming in backpacks for households in the elementaries.
Okay.
We print it per household, and we had a little printing staff who, and it could be scanned by our local mail people. So right now it's coming to the elementaries, and then we'll put out more in the middle and high schools. And we're gonna ask people just per household this year, and if it goes over so well, we just didn't want to have, you know, we have four kids, you don't need four calendars. Um, so they should be in your backpack.
Okay.
They're not there yet.
Not yet.
But if, if those folks who are here tonight would like one, I would certainly go get some. Would you like one?
I really would. Thanks, you.
Sweetie gift for coming to a meeting.
Thank you.
Free calendar! Thank you, thank you for coming.
And seriously, thank you about lunch and recess, because my girl's eating her food and I do love it. So thank you.
I just want to bring that on Valerie, with the whole club and all that kind of thing. I met with this, and then thank you for hiring her, she's doing wonderful at Bostie, so far so good. She's doing good, all that stuff. Um, we met with someone that sounds like Jenny Kay about the whole Spanish that Valerie's talking. Our children in first grade, Valerie and myself, Jenny Kay, we hire somebody on Mondays who comes and teaches the kids Spanish. They meet at Valerie's house, it's cute, you know, they get together, it's a mixture of all the kids. I asked Miss Campbell about the whole Spanish, you know, club and something like that. Kind of seems like nobody knows where to go to direct this, like we found some things. We thought maybe, what if like an assembly, like I leaned said about the PTA? Can you do, if the PTA would get somebody in, like say, once a week or twice a week? Maybe even during like the lunch period, that it would be optional. Instead of getting 40 minutes of a recess, they don't have to, can they go to that?
Unless it's recess.
Hey, Carrie, easy now. Easy now.
What if somebody did something like, like, well, to grant?
So... So I will have...
And did something that way.
What I will have is, obviously, Miss Campbell is...
She was totally on board when we spoke with her.
Relatively new to the district, so, so the networking pieces, it's still something that we're working on here tomorrow. Uh, but I definitely will have our world director, reach out to her. Um, and she is the one who could coordinate something like this and facilitate and work with the PTA in order to see if we can get something going. Um, she's also the one who works with our honor society, and, uh, and that's something I know that maybe they'd be very interested in. So we'll, we'll, we'll start the process rolling, and, uh, yeah, we'll talk to Miss Campbell and see what we can do.
Very great. Also, the end of last year, I asked about the high school scheduling with, say, show choir, things like that. Why the high school doesn't become a place and no longer a club? Where now somebody would have to give up, say, lunch in order to be in show choir? Why in the middle school is it a club that now anybody can attend, anybody can join, and, you know, can try out for, or whatever? But now you come to the high school, now you have to give up, you know, an elective something.
Well, music is a, is a set period in, in the middle schools as well. Uh, some of the outside things that we do with the, some of the choirs, that's, that, those are extra, extra stipends that we would pay our, our middle school staff to, to coordinate. Uh, each of the middle schools do have show choirs or, uh, I'm missing one. They, they each have different ensembles that they run outside of the traditional band, church, or something. Uh, at the high school, um, you know, we have a very robust music program, and it is an elective-based program, um, to get that intensive kind of instruction. And it's credit vary, so that's why we, you know, most high schools tend to offer it as a, as a period, uh, that you, you can...
Also, as far as Dave is concerned, my son's in the middle school, and he still is not bringing gym clothes. So same thing, I don't know when he started, but he's an O B A master, I keep asking him, when are you bringing the gym clothes? He's sixth grade.
So it's not just the high schools, what you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, and R M S, okay.
Yeah, R M S, yeah.
Not that, not that, not that that makes a difference, but I don't, we need to, we have some consistency.
Yeah, if you have to bring a clothes...
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking of those parents, I know when I was at Bostie...
Put your microphone on.
Um, when I was at Bostie, I wanted to do a book club. And I opened it up to the court with, with waiters, I'd let them pick the, the book that, you know, we, we had, now, three books, they got to choose the final book. And every Friday, I would go down to the library, they bring their lunch to the library, and we had a book club. And I did it, I camped and I did it, so I don't know, that's something that, and, and this was in the, it was like fall to winter, so kids weren't really going to recess, they were actually coming to the book club and discussing the book club. And I mentioned to you like how much I enjoyed it.
Yeah.
The kids brought their own perspective on, I didn't see it that way. And it was, I mean, for me, I'm a teacher, so I got such a kick out of hearing their idea of the story. And it was, it was really, totally hear that. So in something like this, they can bring their little lunch, you know...
Those voluntary programs that, that parents want to run during the school day, you would just need to work with the principal of the building. Uh, you know, as long as it's not taking away any of their work from the, the teachers and during the school day, it wouldn't be. So, you know, if there are, if there are parents who want to volunteer to run something during lunch periods, more power to, even during, like, you know, a potentially, potentially during the library. You know, although usually the teachers have set a curriculum they're working on, but any time that a parent wants to volunteer, you go to the, the principal of that building, I can't, I would never see them saying no. That's, that's very powerful.
So for example, in this particular case, they like the Spanish instruction. Um, it sounds like they're gonna have to pay for somebody to do that Spanish instruction. So could they go, like you said, do C F A to get some of the money to offset some of that cost? And if they're gonna get somebody from the outside to do, say, a lunch period of that, does that have any complications?
I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to talk to our, our council about that.
We would have to look and see whether...
We would have to research to see whether there could be a claim for subcontracting out work that typically would belong to the union employees or whether you'd have to give that, um, work to, um, in-house teachers first. So you could explore it, but we would have to look for legal ramifications of doing something like that.
But if the PTA didn't, it wouldn't be any sort of legal ramifications, or would it?
It, it depends. We would have to look and see exactly how it's structured and exactly what they would be doing with the children.
If it was voluntary though, and PTA parents wanted to come in and do something like that? I mean, we, the school district and the PTA has a very, a rich history of parts in education and bringing programs in along those lines. But I think it's gonna be on a more regular basis than just once or two, you know, kind of into-house field trip kind of things. We would have to just do a little bit of legal research before we would say that's going to go ahead. And if it's voluntary?
Did you leave that question we laid from Terry?
Yeah, she just, she just, uh, clarified, it was not both categories, hold on. She said it is... Nope, I'm in the wrong one, sorry. Terry? Sorry, just 10 to 60. Don't let Andrea think there's something wrong. Please tell Jared.
So not, not special at BOCs?
No, just 10 to 60, category 10 to 60.
Case and amp the answer.
Yeah.
And we see a zero somewhere, is that the question?
Yes, it was a zero somewhere.
Well, we're, we're just starting in July now.
Okay.
So this, this appropriation status report is just reporting expenses for the month of July.
Well, I don't see a zero on it anyway, so I don't know what she's...
Well, I do in the expense column for district meeting BOCs.
Okay, yeah, she wanted to know what the total was on that, so...
Well, it's a zero now because we're on cash basis, so even if we incurred expenses in July, it goes by the A M.
Okay.
We don't convert to a pool until the year end, so we're just saying whatever cash actually went out.
Okay.
So it's a zero.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion for the Board of Education, moving to executive session according to open news, all session on FIB, to discuss negotiations pursuant to the tale of, of life after employment, of people person confidential, exempt from the given law, to seek the advice of...
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you everyone for being here tonight. Good morning, say.